He'd be like, yeah, okay, I'll go. Because he has the expertise on that project. But yeah, there's some weirdos.
We're short.
There's also an alley in there that's owned by a bunch of.
It's great to see.
Good to see you.
There's some real.
Hello, Joe.
Yeah.
Bozo things out there.
Yeah. So it's, you know.
It's what happens when you try to hurry up and get something done.
I mean, presumably, they want their garages, right? And we're going to put some sort of season to Sicily. What are we going to do with that?
I don't think so.
Candace.
That's what?
The auditor will be here.
I saw her today, so I am.
It's not Town and Terrace, it's Oak Tree.
Okay, that's okay.
Yeah. Because he wasn't there when it was oak tree. And that's the address.
Okay.
So he doesn't know the history of it. I do, I know that all that money is D B N S's means. Based on tear down.
But he's just like, what are we doing this? It's like.
You didn't see my mouth, but you got the.
Loud and clear.
I don't want to be savage.
Are we expecting one more?
Two ideas.
Well, it is an official record and you are attending a public meeting.
What company do I put?
Anyone you want.
What? Corn and Lucy, I'm kidding.
Dunder Mifflin?
What a fit. Okay. Okay, thank you. Colleen's going to go check.
I don't know if she's here or not.
Hey, Matt.
Hey, guys.
Deb said that she's going to reach out to Lacy. And get her to initiate the removal of those.
Is there?
Because I've always felt like that's a D B N S. We don't take charges off for D B N S. So they have to trigger that. And when I was still there, it was still pending. And so those charges were still there because it was the hammer that they were trying to use on the court case.
It's a bunch of money, isn't it?
It's like, like 1.4 million.
In nuisance claims?
It's demo.
Oh, okay.
Of an entire apartment complex.
Oh, okay.
Where is this apartment complex?
Forty second. It's Oak Tree.
Nine zero one two Pinehurst.
Pinehurst.
Drive north.
North.
Pinehurst sounds like such a real name.
It's sad because I.
Colleen just said she's coming down.
Okay.
I had a number of, in a previous life, I had a number of court cases. Bridge name that location.
Since we might be on camera, I will just leave it at that.
They were all resolved with the best interest of my client, so. Yeah, 29 buildings.
Yep.
I, I've got an earworm.
Shall I, shall I bring up Spotify for you?
Alexa, let's. Do you know what is highly aggravating is when a commercial comes on television where they reference Alexa. And then my Alexa will do what they say on the commercial.
Do you get your Alexa to respond to you? Mine cheat cheat does not like to respond to me at all.
My.
And even like Alexa, Alexa.
My quirky voice. The Google Assistant on my phone, Bixby, hates me. Because it'll like get triggered by anything. It doesn't even have verbally sound like it. Just in the middle of a podcast, like, how can I help you? And I'm like, shut up.
Mine is always have like little button on the side. And it's like, oh, did you clip me? Okay, yep, what do you want?
Did you want something?
It's the phone equivalent of Clippy.
Oh, God, yeah, it is.
Siri, Siri just ignores me 80% of the time. And then she really doesn't try very hard when I ask. I don't think she gets paid enough.
It keeps us so whoop-decked.
Hello there.
All right, since we're all here, I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the Marion County Commissioners Meeting. My name is Joseph O'Connor. I'm the President of the County Commissioners. It is June 21st, 2022, approximately 2:05 PM. And we are in person live in room 260 of the City-County Building. The first thing we'll do is introductions from my colleagues, starting on my left.
Julie Voorhees, Marion County Auditor, the Recording Secretary to the Commissioners.
Good afternoon, I'm Marion County Treasurer Barbara Lawrence, who's the Vice President of the Commissioners.
Thank you. First order of business will be to approve the meeting minutes from May 17th, 2022.
Mr. President, I move approval of the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. In a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Looks like we have new business discussion on 1545 Van Buren.
Yes.
We have guests here. Yeah, please.
So Lou, why don't you guys come sit up here?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Mary Soliday. I'm an attorney. I have offices at 2700 Market Tower. With me today is Lucies and Bill Shoemaker, who are the principals of an entity that is called J S S LLC. I thought it'd be useful, and I'll try to be very brief, but to give you Commissioners a background on why we are here before you today. So, and this is, I mean, this site has a really interesting history. It was, this Van Buren Street site, which is about eight acres, was used back in World War II to make ammunition, to my understanding. World War I as well. So for many years, this was an industrial manufacturing site. The, a prior owner literally abandoned the site sometime around 2010 or so. The Commissioners, in an effort to jumpstart redevelopment of the site and add assessed valuation, put out RFP at the time, this is 2013. So there were a number of interested parties, and our client was able at that time to secure the site after a competitive process. And paid the, didn't you guys pay the back taxes back then? Okay. So in ensuing years, which we're now into, what, year eight, I can't hardly believe, these guys have attempted with a lot of effort, heart and soul, to try to figure out how to redevelop the site. And the first order of business was to attempt to redevelop it with low-income housing through their various state programs. But there is a LI-Tech, which don't ask me what that stands for, Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, that's highly competitive. They had made application at least twice. First time came within like two points of securing credits, did not obtain them. This is, was a very expensive and time-consuming process to make these applications. So then they went, they couldn't secure those credits. So then they went to the private market and worked with financing attorneys to try to find somebody who would make them a loan to redevelop the site. Yes, sir.
We actually, we were awarded bonds if we needed them from the, you know, the state of Indiana. But the bond market went upside down.
Right.
And there wasn't enough money to even do a bond project because it would have left a big deficit.
Yeah, so there's different processes, Lou. So the competitive process is a lot easier to develop. They didn't, you all didn't win in that. But you got this other process with the bonds. But let me kind of, let me kind of finish the scenario, just so that they understand. So, long story short, there have been a couple amendments of a project agreement. So maybe going back to 2013, there was a project agreement with the Commissioners to redevelop the site with X many apartment units by X date. And part, parts of all this is that the site had to be cleaned up environmentally, which it has been. So we fast forward to 2022, there is now a, is it called a Environmental Remediation Certificate of Record?
Certificate of Completion.
Yeah, Certificate of Completion is now of the, on the record that the site has been remediated. It's down to concrete slabs, there might be one or two small something or others left. It's all, it's all slab, okay. Well, this was a monumental effort just to get the site cleaned up. Because it took, and I, I wasn't involved, our firm wasn't involved, Barnes and Thurberg was. Spent many, many years collaborating with the Indiana Department of Environmental Management, doing all the benchmarks that were required to obtain that final certificate of completion. So the site has been cleaned up at no cost to the taxpayers. So I think that's significant. So here we are today, after all these attempts to secure financing, to try to jumpstart some sort of housing on the site. These guys, you know, they're not the richest guys around, but they, you know, have good financial statements. And they can't pull it off. I mean, it's just the reality. And they've tried and tried, and it's been very disappointing. So what we think the best approach is right now, because I think, again, we all share this common interest of, let's increase assessed valuation. They are paying taxes today, but what is it, 10,000 a year or something? It's not much. Yeah. We'd all want to see the property redeveloped, redeveloped. What does that future look like? Personally, it'd be great to have lower-income housing and serve that community. Don't know that anybody can build it, wants to build it, can finance it, what have you. The other option would be, the comprehensive plan for Marion County proposes the site for general industrial. So whether that would be sort of a warehouse distribution, light assembly, something like that. So they'd like to sell the site. Problem with that is there is this project agreement of record, which means that anybody that does a title search will see it. And they're going to know that, well, wait a minute, we can't do anything with this property unless this document is released of record. And so Matt's been terrific in terms of doing his due diligence, your legal counsel, of course, but just for the record. But the reality is, the stakeholders in the area get it, I think. And they've met over the last four or five months with various stakeholders, SEND and Fountain Square and City Councilman Muscari, that, you know, we've tried and tried, here we are today, and we feel like the most constructive solution is to release the project agreement so that the title's clean. Then they can go out, list the property with the broker, so the broker doesn't have to explain to people, why is this project agreement of record? And attempt to see what the marketplace will, what interest the marketplace has in potential reuse of the site. We know that there were questions about how much money has been spent along the way. So why don't you hand that to the fir. We've brought multiple copies of our expenditures to date. And so we know, Commissioners, you're not going to want today to make a decision, but we wanted to meet with you in person, answer your questions, try to be as transparent as possible. In terms of what has literally gone on here since, believe it or not, 2013. So actually, it'll be nine years in October. So, I know that was rather long-winded, but I decided it'd be useful for you all to have that background. So what questions do you have of us?
Want any questions from the board?
I, I just have a couple of questions. So, the environmental remediation and 1.6 million. Give us some indication of the scope or what you had to do? And where, like, is there a vapor extrusion? What did it include?
Yeah, so what have, again, a lot of money, and you've kind of got two pieces of that puzzle. You've got, three pieces, really. You've got the engineering piece of the puzzles, there's a lot of drilling, a lot of maps that had to be drawn up to figure out where, where that contamination was, where it was coming from, what it would do to take to remediate it. And it was a couple of different areas, actually, three, three areas. And so it took a long time to get those maps and that analysis and get I-D-M to go along with that. Once that was done, what we did was, we did a process where you excavate that existing material, you treat it with a chemical, you get a neutral reading back on it, we use that same material and put back in the ground so there's no scoop and haul away. But we got, and then we monitored for almost three years, you know, different, every quarter, to get the results they were looking for down below the levels they were asking for. So, so going forward, what, what has to be done on that property? Kind of the standard thing that you see that as you, any slabs you put up, there's a vapor barrier that goes underneath that slab. Believe that's the only restriction on those. And then also the water wells. So obviously, Marion County invites me digging water wells, but there was a, there's a restriction that no drinking water wells be drilled on the property. And that's, that's really the only restriction we have. And in addition, I think one other thing that Mary didn't mention, we also got from the, recently from the Governor's Office in the last few weeks, they sent also a covenant not to sue. So that's kind of the final piece of the puzzle in the, in the environmental cleanup.
What does that mean exactly? Covenant not to sue?
Well, I'm not an attorney, but.
Again, I did personally handle this, that's why I'm asking.
Okay, well, basically, that, you know, the principals or GSS would not be held accountable. They will not come back and sue because basically, it is to their standards of the highest regard. So therefore, it's like getting the Willy Wonka golden ticket, okay?
So I-D-M won't sue you over the condition of the property?
So you can't get any better than this.
Got it, okay.
And that takes a long time.
Okay. And I know in some instances, when, when there's a parcel like that, that owners or investors can go back to the previous insurance company to collect. Was there any effort made for that or not available?
We, there was some, and in one of the amendments, we talked about that. So we did get some money back from that, not nearly enough, as we talked about in those amendments. We didn't get enough to cover it, but we had enough, but all our bills were paid on the property. And we did get, get across the finish line. It drug out longer, more expensive than what we thought going into it.
And.
Go ahead, sorry. Oh, I was just, so there was a policy that was paid for the remediation on, on some level, it didn't cover 100%?
Right, it didn't cover 100%. It's, you know, it's a negotiating tactic like anything else, but as we did it, it was, you know, we negotiated our best, what we thought would be our cost when it was done. But we didn't have the right to go back to them for any more money, so.
So it was given upfront, that, the expenses ran over and then?
Expenses ran over correctly, yeah.
From the upfront policy?
Right, yes.
And the architecture expenditure is that related to some potential development and design of the housing?
Yeah, architecture and engineering, both. And we had, and the applications we have to make to the state for the.
For the bonds.
The bonds and the funding credit looking for, so there was quite a bit of money spent there.
I also think you need engineers and architects to even do demolition, right?
Absolutely, yeah. And, and site design, whatever else, so.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Thanks. Okay. And what, I guess, last question I have, like, what year do you think the housing scenario kind of fell apart? Is it pre-COVID, post-COVID?
Well, I'd.
I don't need, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I, I think, Joe, early on, you know, the first three or four years, obviously, there's, there's a little, in that application process for that funding, they always, there's way less recipients than there are applicants. So we, we lost out in that. But at the end of the day, until the environmental got cleaned up, we, we could have never met the timetables that we proposed in those housing applications until this environmental piece of the puzzle. Because it was three spots on the property that would, you know, we couldn't have done, we couldn't have built part of the project and waited for the rest of the project. But, you know, one of the hotspots was kind of right in the middle of the property. So until this, this, you know, the environmental piece was done, which was just December last year, November, December, we got our, basically, the, the release. We couldn't have done anything, so it was kind of a moot point. So, you know, here we are, now would be the time to start that process if you're going to do it again. We just, we had, I think everybody was hoping for the best, and it took a little longer than we thought.
Right. I mean, highest and best use, do you have an appraisal with highest and best use? I'm assuming it is probably in it's the highest and best use currently. I mean, that industrial warehouse market is pretty hot right now.
Basically, you know, there, we want to investigate, you know, still the housing first, because it is on D-10. Okay, if there's people that want to come in and see the vision, we had a meeting with SEND as well as Fountain Square. They realized they didn't have any true control over that property, but they, what they came away from, he had, I had one meeting with SEND, and he had the other meeting with Fountain Square, I couldn't be there. But basically, they came away and said, look, we want something that's either going to be nice to have housing, or something that's going to create jobs in the area. You know, that's, that's what we came away with when, you know, when we spent our time talking and visiting, you know, on, with that there. So, and also, we met with the councilman as well, and, and we shared out that with Mr. Muscari as well. So it's, I still think they're viable, but since we have D-10 on there, we'd like to probably explore that first. You know, because it would take a rezoning again, you know, if we would go back down to I-3.
Which is what it was before 2013.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so when it was a factory, it was zoned industrial. Yeah, D-10 is a high-density residential zoning. So there could be a multiple-story, multiple-family building or buildings. But, you know, financing is terribly complicated now, now interest rates have. So, we certainly understand if you need time to continue your due diligence, but we wanted to meet with you in person. We're happy to come back. So we leave it to you all as to how you'd like to proceed.
Yeah, I think this was just an informational.
Yep.
Meeting, so no decisions to be made, just see what's going on and. So I don't have any more questions. Does any, anyone else on the board have any questions?
So, to finish this process, we would need a resolution of the commission, correct?
Yeah, if you wanted to take an official action, such as determining the fate of that existing project agreement, you'd have to have a board resolution, yeah.
Okay.
So, so for the edification of the public, what we're doing is releasing those conditions of that property. It's currently deeded to them with conditions. Once those conditions are released, they have a free marketable title to do with it as they wish, whether it's market to sell or use.
That'd be correct.
However, they want, so.
That'd be correct, and myself and counsel would have to figure out the finer details on the, on the termination document, which we've preliminarily discussed. But until that's the board's intention to do so, we won't, we won't follow through with that.
Okay.
So we are happy to come back at your August meeting. If that gives, if 60 days is an adequate time for you all to consider your options here and refer with counsel and continue what due diligence you think is appropriate. Would that, would that be appropriate for you all to schedule us that way?
Yeah, I think that's more than enough time. I, I guess, do we not have a July meeting? Or is it just you thought we would need?
I think someone else was unavailable. I think there was a schedule.
I personally can't be here in July.
Oh, sure, sure.
But that doesn't mean that if you all wanted to proceed, these gentlemen could be here. I just have a longstanding trip planned, so I'm able to be here.
I think our intention was to consider this and, yeah, back again in August.
Okay, well, that's fine with my timeframe, as long as it works for everyone else.
Do we need a motion or any action or require?
Not this time, no.
So we'll just plan to be on your August agenda, come back?
Great.
Sounds great. All right, well, thank you so much, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, next we have a resolution on Senate Enrolled Act 62, Nonprofit Housing Legislation. Looks like we have a guidance and policy document here that.
Hi. And Mr. President, if you're all right, I'll just do my spiel.
Yes.
Okay. And do, do we have a copy of the resolution? Okay. This is sort of the final phase of Senate Enrolled Act 62, which was passed by the Indiana General Assembly and signed by the governor in March. The policy, the guidance and policy document is a document that serves as guidance for the Commissioners in terms of how we deal with these issues, and also is information for the nonprofits that want to participate. Along with this is a copy of an application. And we have had these for a month or so. I have had discussions, as has Mickey Rogers from the Treasurer's Office, with nonprofits who were actively engaged in this. There were three or four comments that came back. And if you look at the last page, page six, it's really bad when your eyes can't, yes, page six, you can see on the final bullet, I refer to the two-year project period, which was a bit of a change. And then extensions of the two-year project period can be made when mutually agreed upon by the nonprofit and the Commissioners. There were several groups that came back and said, between funding, supply chain delays, we are concerned that that two years might be a problem. So rather than just extend it to three years, I gave us the option to review that. The other change that was made in this document is on page four. We have been working to put this online. And it, the applications will actually go through an online portal with govies rather than coming directly to us. So I took out any reference to email the application or mail it in. So those were the two changes that were made on there. Moving on to the application, there were just a couple of changes. Under the terms of the state law, applications are due 45 days before the start of the auction. The auction this year is the week of September 26th. So when you back up, the deadline will be, it's actually Friday, August 12th, not Friday, August 15th, not Monday, August 15th, it's Friday, August 12th. There were, as you can imagine, probably five or six different versions of this by the time it got finished. Then additional changes on page three, again, it has to do with please submit application two, because we are now requiring that it be all online. So those are the changes that were made. We did have some meaningful stakeholder input. There was one request that came back and asked if we could use this for rental property. And under the terms of the state law, it's specifically for home ownership. That might be something that we want to explore at a future point in time. But for the purposes of this, it's, it's got to be owner occupied, it's for homeownership. So the resolution is pretty straightforward. It basically just says, here's what we're doing, and we'd like to approve this. Does anybody have any questions or comments or anything else?
Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Approving the application or the resolution?
Approving the application, the guidance and the resolution.
The resolution is to approve both the guidance document and the, and the application form. As updated.
Move to approve, resolution is written, including the application project, the application process, and the nonprofit housing program guidance and policy document.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. In a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, resolution is approved. Seeing, do we have any more business to come before the Marion County Commissioners today? Seeing or hearing none, our next meeting will be July 19th. Seeing or hearing none, our next meeting will be July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at two P M. In the same room, which is room two sixty of the City-County Building. And seeing or hearing no other business come before the board today, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move adjournment, Mr. President.
Thanks, we are adjourned.